Good morning, honorable members. The inaugural session will start in two minutes. May we request the honorable members to take their seats. Thank you.
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the 4th Monday of July 2025, and the Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the 4th Monday of July to commence its regular session. Pursuant to establish parliamentary rules and practices, I hereby call the first regular session of the 20th Congress to order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem to be led by the Saint Therese Educational Foundation of Tacloban Incorporated Children's Choir. Please remain standing for the doxology to be performed by Albert Dagami, Ralph Saul Monteclaros, Jofet Osenna, and John Mark Pedrita. The Deputy Secretary General of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members of the House of Representatives elected from legislative districts apportioned among the provinces and cities and party list organizations in alphabetical order.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, National Capital Region, City of Calaokan, First District, Honorable Oscar G. Malapitan; Second District, Honorable Edgar R. Erisé; Third District, Honorable Dean Asistio; City of Las Pinas, Loan District, Honorable Mark Anthony Santos; City of Makati, First District, Honorable Monique Yasmin Maria Q. Lagdomeo; Second District, Honorable Dennis Alden B. Almario; City of Malabon, Loan District, Honorable Antolin A. Oretta III; City of Mandaluyong, Loan District, Honorable Alexandria P. Gonzalez; City of Manila, First District, Honorable Ernesto M. Dionisio Jr.; Second District, Honorable Rolando M. Valeriano; Third District, Honorable Joel R. Chua; Fourth District, Honorable Giselle Mary L. Maceda; Fifth District, Honorable Irvin C. Tien; Second District, Honorable Bienvenido M. Abante Jr.; City of Marquina, First District, Honorable Marcelino Marczi R. Teodoro; Second District, Honorable Attorney Miro S. Kimbo; City of Montenlupa, Loan District, Honorable Jaime R. Fresnedi; City of Navotas, Loan District, Honorable Tobias Toby M. Tianco; City of Paranyake, First District, Honorable Eric L. Olivares; Second District, Honorable Brian Raymond S. Yamsuan; Pasay City, Loan District, Honorable Antonino G. Calixto; City of Pasig, Loan District, Honorable Roman T. Romolo; Quezon City, First District, Honorable Juan Carlos Arjo C. Atide; Second District, Honorable Ralph Wendell T. Tulfo; Third District, Honorable Franz S. Pumaran; Fourth District, Honorable Jesús Manuel Bong C. Suntay; Fifth District, Honorable Patrick Michael D. Vargas; Sixth District, Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar; City of San Juan, Loan District, Honorable Isabel Maria J. Zamora; City of Taguig, First Councilor District, Pateros, Loan District, Honorable Ricardo S. Cruz Jr.; City of Taguig, Second Councilor District, Loan District, Honorable Jorge Daniel S. Bocobo; City of Venezuela, First District, Honorable Kenneth I. T. Gachalian; Second District, Honorable Gerald Galang; Region 1, Ilocos Region, Ilocos Norte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos; Second District, Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba; Ilocos Sur, First District, Honorable Ronald V. Singson; Second District, Honorable Christine Singson Mihán; La Union, First District, Honorable Francisco Paulo P. Ortega V.; Second District, Honorable Dante S. García; Pangasinan, First District, Honorable Arthur F. Celeste; Second District, Honorable Mark O. Coanco; Third District, Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas; Fourth District, Honorable Maria Georgina P. de Venecia; Fifth District, Honorable Ramon N. Guico Jr.; Sixth District, Honorable Marlin L. Primicias Agapas; Region 2, Cagayan Valley, Batanes, Loan District, Honorable Siriaco B. Gato Jr., MD, FPSO, HNS; Cagayan, First District, Honorable Ramon C. Nolasco; Second District, Honorable Baby Alein Vargas Alfonso; Third District, Honorable Joseph Jojo L. Lara; Isabela, First District, Honorable Antonio Tony Pet T. Albano; Second District, Honorable Ed Christopher S. Go; Third District, Honorable Ian Paul L. D.; Fourth District, Honorable Joseph S. Tan; Fifth District, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos T. D. III; Sixth District, Honorable Faustino G. D. III; Nuevo Viscaia, Loan District, Honorable Timothy Joseph E. Caiton; Quirino, Loan District, Honorable Midi N. Kua; Region 3, Centralizón Aurora, Loan District, Honorable Romel Rico T. Angara; Bataan, First District, Honorable Antonino B. Roman III; Second District, Honorable Albert S. García; Third District, Maria Angela S. García; Bulacan, First District, Honorable Attorney Danilo Dani A. Domingo; Second District, Honorable Augustina Dominique Ditsetina C. Pancho; Third District, Honorable Mark Cholo I. Violago; Fourth District, Honorable Linabel Ruth R. Villarica; Fifth District, Honorable Agatha Paula Aguilar Cruz; Sixth District, Honorable Salvador A. Plato; City of San Jose del Monte, Loan District, Honorable Arturo B. Robes; Nueva Ecija, First District, Mikaela Angela B. Swansing; Second District, Honorable Mario Cocoy O. Salvador; Third District, Honorable Julius César J. Vergara; Fourth District, Honorable Emerson D. Pascual; Pampanga, First District, Honorable Carmelo G. Lazatin Jr.; Second District, Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo; Third District, Honorable Elisa Mikaela Maika M. González; Fourth District, Honorable Anna York P. Bondok MD; Tarilac, First District, Honorable Jaime Eduardo Mark D. Coanco; Second District, Honorable Maria Cristina C. Ángeles; Third District, Honorable Noel Bong N. Rivera; Zambales, First District, Honorable Jefferson F. Conghun; Second District, Honorable Doris E. Manikis; Region 4, A. Calabarzon, Batangas, First District, Honorable Leandro Legarda Leviste; Second District, Honorable Attorney Jervil Jinky Betrix R. Luisstro; Third District, Honorable King George Leandro Antonio V. Coliantes; Fourth District, Honorable Amado Carlos A. Bolilia IV; Fifth District, Honorable Beverly Rose A. Di Macua; Sixth District, Honorable Ryan S. Recto; Cavite, First District, Honorable Ramon Jolo B. Revilia III; Second District, Honorable Lani Mercado Revilia; Third District, Honorable Adrian J. C. Advincula; Fourth District, Honorable Francisco Kiko A. Barzaga; Fifth District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola; Sixth District, Honorable Antonio A. Ferrer; Seventh District, Honorable Crispin Diego D. Remulia; Eighth District, Honorable Anella Bianca D. Tolentino; Laguna, First District, Honorable Maria Rene Anne Lourdes G. Matibag; Second District, Honorable Ramil Laurel Hernández; Third District, Honorable Loretto S. Amante; Fourth District, Honorable Benjamin C. Agarao Jr.; City of Biñan, Loan District, Honorable Walfredo Arman R. Di Magila Jr.; City of Calamba, Loan District, Honorable Charisse Anne C. Hernández; City of Santa Rosa, Loan District, Honorable Roy M. González; Quezon, First District, Honorable Wilfredo Mark M. Enverga; Second District, Honorable David J. J. C. Suárez; Third District, Honorable Renante U. Arrogancia; Fourth District, Honorable Keith Maika Attorney Mike D. L. Tan; Rizal, First District, Honorable Rebecca Maria Alcantara Ináres; Second District, Honorable Emigio P. Tanwatko III; Third District, Honorable José Arturo S. García Jr.; Fourth District, Honorable Denis Tom L. Hernández; City of Antipolo, First District, Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno; Second District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop; Southwestern Tagalog Region, Mi Maropa Region; Marindukue, Loan District, Honorable Reinaldo P. Salvación; Occidental Mindoro, Loan District, Honorable Leodi Odi F. Tariela; Oriental Mindoro, First District, Honorable Arnan C. Panaligan; Second District, Honorable Alfonso V. Umalí Jr.; Palawan, First District, Honorable Rosali Ang. Salvamit; Second District, Honorable C. Álvarez; Third District, Honorable Gil Cabarangay Jr. A. Acosta; Romblón, Loan District, Honorable Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona; Region 5, Bicol Region, Albay, First District, Honorable Cielo Criselle Lagman; Second District, Honorable Carlos Andes Loría; Third District, Honorable Adrian E. Salceda; Camarines Norte, First District, Honorable Josefina B. Talyado; Second District, Honorable Rosemary Conejos Panotes; Camarines Sur, First District, Honorable Suyoshi Anthony G. Oribata; Second District, Honorable Vicenzzo Renato Luigi R. Villafuerte; Third District, Honorable Nelson S. Legación; Fourth District, Honorable Arni B. Fuentebelia; Fifth District, Honorable Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte; Catanduanes, Loan District, Honorable Yelojio Leo R. Rodríguez; Masbate, First District, Honorable Antonio T. Ko; Second District, Honorable Elisa Olga T. Ko; Third District, Honorable Wilton Tonton T. Ko; Sorsogón, First District, Honorable Maria Bernadette G. Escudero; Second District, Honorable Woho Fortez; Region 6, Western Visayas, Aklan, First District, Honorable Jesús Jess R. Marquez; Second District, Honorable Florencio T. Mira Flores; Antike, Loan District, Honorable Antonio B. Legarda Jr.; Capis, First District, Honorable Ivan Howard A. Ginto; Second District, Honorable Jane T. Castro; Gimaras, Loan District, Honorable J. C. Ramon A. Nava MD; Iloilo, First District, Honorable Janet L. Garin; Second District, Honorable Catherine Joyce F. Gorreceta; Third District, Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor; Fourth District, Honorable Virginal G. Birón MD; Fifth District, Honorable Binky April M. Tupas; City of Iloilo, Loan District, Honorable Julian Jam L. Baronda; Region 7, Central Visayas, Bohol, First District, Honorable Jan Gisnel L. Yap II; Second District, Honorable Maria Vanessa Van Van C. Aumentado RN; Third District, Honorable Christine Alexi B. Chutor; Cebu, First District, Honorable Rea May A. Gulyas; Second District, Honorable Edsel A. Galeos; Third District, Honorable Karen Hope F. García; Fourth District, Honorable Sun Judal Shimura; Fifth District, Honorable Vincent Frasco Doc D. Frasco; Sixth District, Honorable Daphne A. Lagon; Seventh District, Honorable Patricia C. Calderón; City of Cebu, First District, Honorable Rachel Margarit B. Delmar; Second District, Honorable Eduardo R. Rama; City of Lapulapu, Loan District, Honorable Junard Ahong Q. Chan; City of Mandawe, Loan District, Honorable Emery Lollipop Owano Dizon; Region 8, Eastern Visayas, Biliran, Loan District, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr.; Eastern Samar, Loan District, Honorable Christopher Sheen P. González; Leyte, First District, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes; Second District, Honorable Lolita T. Javier; Third District, Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Toazon; Fourth District, Honorable Richard I. Gómez DPA; Fifth District, Honorable Carl Nicolás C. Carey; Northern Samar, First District, Honorable Nico Raúl S. J. Daza; Second District, Honorable Edwin Ong Chuwan; Samar, First District, Honorable Stephen James T. Tan; Second District, Honorable Reynolds Michael T. Tan; Southern Leyte, First District, Honorable Roger Gaviola Mercado; Second District, Honorable Christopher Coco M. Yap; Region 9, Sambuanga Peninsula, Sambuanga del Norte, First District, Honorable Roberto Pinpin T. Uy Jr.; Second District, Honorable Irene G. Labat Labat; Third District, Honorable Adrian Michael A. Amatong; Sambuanga del Sur, First District, Honorable Joseph Kim C. Yu; Second District, Honorable Jaisal Victoria C. Yu; City of Sambuanga, First District, Honorable Katrina Reko Chuatai; Second District, Honorable Jerry Evangelista Pérez; Sambuanga Cebugay, First District, Honorable Marlo C. Bankoro; Second District, Honorable Marleesa Doc Morley Hoffer Haseem; Region 10, Northern Mindanao, Bukidnon, First District, Honorable Se Manuel F. Alba; Second District, Honorable Jonathan Keith T. Flores; Third District, Honorable Audrey K. T. Zubiri; Fourth District, Honorable Laarni Levine Rocke; Camiggin, Loan District, Honorable Jordan Jesús M. Romualdo; Lanau del Norte, First District, Honorable Imelda Quebranza D. Maporo; Second District, Honorable City Amina Q. D. Maporo; City of Iligan, Loan District, Honorable Celso G. Regencia; Misamis Occidental, First District, Honorable Jason P. Almonte; Second District, Honorable Sancho Fernando Ando F. O'Aminal; Misamis Oriental, First District, Honorable Jennifer A. Lagbas; Second District, Honorable Yevjini Vincente B. Imano; City of Cagayan de Oro, First District, Honorable Lordon G. Suwon; Second District, Honorable Rufus B. Rodríguez; Region 11, Davau Region, Davau de Oro, First District, Honorable Maria Carmen S. Zamora; Second District, Honorable Leonel D. Seniza; Davau del Norte, First District, Honorable Carlo L. Uy; Second District, Honorable Se Manuel J. M. Florendo Lagdomeo; Davau del Sur, Loan District, Honorable John Tracy F. Cagas; City of Davau, First District, Honorable Paolo Z. Duterte; Second District, Honorable Omar Vincent Sangcola Duterte; Third District, Honorable Isidro T. Ungab; Davau Occidental, Loan District, Honorable Claudia P. Bautista; Davau Oriental, First District, Honorable Nelson J. R. De Yanghira; Second District, Honorable Chino Miguel D. Almario; Region 12, Socser Gin, Cotobato, First District, Honorable Edwin L. Cruzado MD; Second District, Honorable Rudy S. Kawagdan DPA; Third District, Honorable Maria Alana Samantha T. Santos; Sarangani, Loan District, Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon; South Cotobato, First District, Honorable Isidro D. Lumayag; Second District, Honorable Ferdinand L. Hernández; Third District, Honorable Dibo S. Tuwan; City of General Santos, Loan District, Honorable Sherlyn L. Bañez Nograles; Sultan Kudarak, First District, Honorable Ruth M. Sakaluran; Second District, Honorable Belia Vanessa B. Swansing; Region 13, Karaga Administrative Region, Agusan del Norte, Loan District, Honorable Dale B. Corvera; City of Butuan, Loan District, Honorable Se Joboy S. Aquino II; Agusan del Sur, First District, Honorable Affilito Alfell M. Basku; Second District, Honorable Edibong G. Plaza; Dinagat Island, Loan District, Honorable Kaka J. Bagao; Surigao del Norte, First District, Honorable Francisco Lalo T. Matugas; Second District, Honorable Bernadette S. Barbers; Surigao del Sur, First District, Honorable Romeo S. Momo Senior; Second District, Honorable Alexander T. Pimentel; Cordillera Administrative Region, Abra, Loan District, Honorable Joseph Santoninho B. Bernos; Apayau, Loan District, Honorable Eleanor C. Bullet Big Tang; Benguet, Loan District, Honorable Eric Go Yap; City of Baguio, Loan District, Honorable Mauricio G. Domogan; Ifogao, Loan District, Honorable Solomon R. Chunggalao; Kalinga, Loan District, Honorable Carolyn B. Agyaow; Mountain Province, Loan District, Honorable Maximo Y. Dalog Jr.; Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao, Basilan, Loan District, Honorable Ustads Yustop T. Alano; Lanau del Sur, First District, Honorable Zia Alonto Adyong; Second District, Honorable Yaser Alonto Balindong; Magindanao del Norte, Loan District, Honorable Bai Dimple I. Mastura; Magindanao del Sur, Loan District, Honorable Esmael G. Mangudadatu; Sulu, First District, Honorable Samir Eitan; Second District, Honorable Munir M. Arbison; Tawi Tawi, Loan District, Honorable Dismore M. Sally; Negroes Island Region, Negroes Occidental, First District, Honorable Julio A. Ledesma IV; Second District, Honorable Alfredo D. Maranyon III; Third District, Honorable Javier Miguel López Benitez; Fourth District, Honorable Jeffrey P. Ferrer; Fifth District, Honorable Emilio Bernardino L. Yulo; Sixth District, Honorable Mercedes K. Álvarez; City of Bacoled, Loan District, Honorable Alfredo Albi B. Benitez; Negroes Oriental, First District, Negroes Oriental, First District, Honorable Emmanuel L. EY. Second District, Honorable Maria Isabel L. Sagarbaria. Third District, Honorable Janis Degamo. Siquehor Lone District, Honorable Saudi S. Villia. Partilist, One Rider Partilist, Ang Buklod ng Mga Motorista ng Pilipinas, Honorable Ramon Rodrigo L. Gutierrez. Wantahanan, Wantahanan Incorporated, Honorable Nathaniel M. Odukado. Porque, Kababaian, Kabalikatan para sa kapakanan at kaunlaran ng bayan, Honorable Iris Marie de Mesa Montez. For peace, Pagtibain at Palaguin ang Pangkabuhayan Pilipino, Honorable Marcelino C. Libanan, Honorable J.C. M. Abalos. Abamin, Abante Mindanao Incorporated, Honorable Maximo B. Rodriguez Jr. Abang Lingkod, Abang Lingkod Incorporated, Honorable Manuel Manman O. Ko. ACIS, Anti-Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated, Honorable Edvick Giap. Honorable Jocelyn P. Tulfo. Act Teachers, Act Teachers Partilist, Honorable Antonio El Tinio. Agap, Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines, Honorable Nikanor M. Briones. Agimat, Agimat ng masa, Honorable Brian B. Revilla. Akbayan, Akbayan Citizens Action Party, Honorable Se Manuel Tadeo Chel L. Diokno, I. Diokno. Honorable Percy Sendanya. Honorable Dadaw Kiram Ismula. Ako Bicol, Ako Bicol Political Party, Honorable Elizalde Esco. Honorable Alfredo A. Garbin Jr. Ako Visaya, Ako Visaya Incorporated, Honorable Sunny S. L. L. Lagon. Ako Ilukano Ako, Honorable Richel Singson. Alona, Alliance of Organization Networks and Associations of the Philippines. Honorable Maria Cristina Talavera López. APEC, Association of Philippine Electric Cooperatives, Honorable Sergio C. Dagoo. Asensu Pinoy, Honorable Henry F. O. Omenal Jr. BH, Bagong Generación, Honorable Robert Nazal. Bicol Saro, Honorable Terry L. Ridon. Cibac, Citizens Battle Against Corruption. Honorable Eduardo Brother Eli C. Villanueva. Coop Natco, Cooperative Natco Network Party, Honorable Filimon M. Espares. Construction Worker Solidarity, CWS, Honorable Edwin L. Gardiola. Dumper PTDA, Dumper Philippines Taxi Drivers Association Incorporated, Honorable Claudine Diana D. Bautista Lim. FPJ Panday Bayanihan, FPJ Panday Bayanihan Partilist, Honorable Brian Poe. GP Galingsa Puso, Galingsa Puso Partilist, Honorable John Juric Attorney JP D.L. Padernos. Kabataan, Kabataan Partilist, Honorable Renee Louise M. Co. Kamalayan, Kalipunan ng Maralita at Malayang Mamamayan Incorporated, Honorable Carolyn L. Tantay. Kamanggagawa, Kampian ng Mga Maralita at Manggagawa, Honorable Elijah Rumboa San Fernando. Kapuso MM, PM, Kabalikat Patungo sa Umuunlad na Sistematico at Organisadong Pangkabuhayan, Honorable Munir N. Arbison Jr. KM Ngayon Na, Kilos Mamamayan Ngayon Na, Honorable Kenneth Paulo C. Tereng. Kusog Tausog, Honorable Ayman T. Tan. LPGMA, LPG Marketers Association Incorporated, Honorable Alan UT. Magbubukid Mamamayan para sa Gobernung bubuklod sa mga isip at biwan ng Pilipino, Honorable Ferdinand B. One L. Beltran. Malasakit at Bayanihan, Malasakit at Bayanihan Foundation Incorporated, Honorable Gurli I. Veloso. Manila Teachers, Manila Teacher Savings and Loan Association Incorporated, Honorable Maria Nina Francesca P. Lakson. ML, Mga Umayang Liberal, Honorable Lila M. de Lima. Nanay, Honorable Florabel C. Yatko. One Coop, Aurora Integrated Multi-Purpose Cooperative, Honorable Maria Cristina Jihan B. Glepa. Filrika, Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association Incorporated, Honorable Presley C. de Jesús. PPP, Pwersan ng Pilipinong Pandagat, Honorable Harold James T. Duterte. Pusong Pinoy, Honorable Journey Jet V. Nisai. SAGIP, Social Amelioration and General Intervention in Poverty, Honorable Paulo Henry M. Marcoleta, Senior Citizens Partilist. Coalition of Association Senior Citizens of the Philippines, Honorable Rodolfo Ompong M. Ordanes. Solid North Party, Solidarity of North Luzon People's Party, Honorable Ching B. Bernos. SSS GSIS Pensionado, Honorable Rolando Ledesma Makasait. Suerte, Solo Parent Working for Economic Rights and Other Thrusts for Equality, Honorable Arlin P. Ion. TGP, Talino at Galings ng Pinoy, Honorable Se Bong J. Tevez Jr., Tingok, Tingok Sinarangan, Honorable Andrew Julian K. Ramaldes. Honorable Jude A. Acdré, Honorable Yedda Marie K. Ramaldes. Trabaho, Tagapagtaguyot ng mga reforma sa adhihkaing babalikat at tahango sa mga oportunidad para sa mga Pilipino, Honorable Johan Monich P. Bautista, G. Bautista. EUCP, Trade Union Congress Party, Honorable Raymond Democrat C. Mendoza, United Senior Citizens, United Senior Citizens Coalition ng Pilipinas Incorporated, Honorable Milagros Aquino Magsay Say. Uswag Ilonggo, Uswag Ilonggo Party, Honorable James Jojo Ang Jr.
290. Mr. Presiding Officer, the roll call shows that 290 members responded to the call.
With 290 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. To ensure orderly proceedings, the Chair designates the Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor of the Third District of Iloilo as the Acting Plural Leader. Before we open the table for nomination of candidates for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, let me state for the record that precedents, based on previous rules of the House, provide that members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House, and they shall elect among themselves the Majority Leader. The Minority Leader shall be elected by the members of the minority acting plural leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved, the nominations are now in order. Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable David J.J.C. Suarez from the Second District of Quezon to make his nomination.
The Honorable David J.J.C. Suarez from the Second District of Quezon is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues of the 20th Congress, ladies and gentlemen. As we gather today to formally open the 20th Congress of the Republic, we do so at a critical moment of our nation's story. One filled with promise but also marked by uncertainty. It is in moments like these that leadership matters most. It is in that spirit that I rise today to nominate a man whose leadership has been tested, proven, and deeply felt across this chamber and beyond. The Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes. In the 19th Congress, Speaker Ramaldes feared this institution with both resolve and wisdom. Under his stewardship, the House of the Representatives became a true House of the people. Responsive to the needs of the nation, attuned to the voice of the common Filipino, and anchored in the values of unity, service, and progress. He brought not just experience but character. Character marked by quiet strength, strategic foresight, and unwavering commitment to public service. With clarity of vision and steadiness of hand, he championed landmark reforms, strengthened legislative-executive cooperation, and ensured that every voice, regardless of affiliation or region, found space in the national conversation. Colleagues, I have seen firsthand how Speaker Ramaldes works, not for the spotlight but for results. His leadership transcends titles. It is grounded in listening, guided by principle, and driven by an enduring faith in the Filipino people. In the face of adversity, he remains calm. Under pressure, he stays grounded. Amid political divisions, he builds bridges. And in times of doubt, he leads with the heart. The 19th Congress, under his watch, he delivered one of the most productive and purposeful legislative terms in recent memory. We passed priority measures that advanced the goals of Bagong Pilipinas, empowered communities, and created pathways for inclusive and sustainable growth. But more than numbers of laws, he gave us direction. And he gave the public something more important than power: trust. That trust was not given lightly. It was earned, earned through hard work, transparency, and a kind of leadership that listens more than it speaks, delivers more than it promises, and unites more than it divides. As we open a new chapter in the 20th Congress, we face fresh challenges: global volatility, domestic headwind, and the ever-present call to bring our people out of poverty and into opportunity. But we also have a foundation to build on: a legacy of inclusive leadership, collaborative governance, and a house that truly works. That legacy has a name, and today it is my distinct honor to nominate him as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes is not only a public servant of experience and stature, he is a leader of empathy, integrity, and conviction, a unifier, a reformer, a partner of the President, and a champion of the people. Let us entrust the speakership to a man who has already shown us what dignified, decisive, and compassionate leadership looks like. Let us reaffirm our commitment to good governance by placing the gavel once more in capable and steady hands. I respectfully nominate the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress.
Mabuhay ang ating kongreso, mabuhay ang sambyan ng Pilipino. Maraming salamat po sa ating lahat.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos from the First District of Ilocos Norte to Second the nomination.
The Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues. On behalf of the Partido Federal ng Pilipinas, I rise today with profound pride and resolute conviction to formally second the nomination of the esteemed gentleman from the First District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes for the position of Speaker of House of Representatives in the 20th Congress.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Inverga from the First District of Quezon to Second the nomination.
The Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, esteemed members of this chamber. On behalf of the Nationalist People's Coalition, I am deeply honored and proud to second the nomination of Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno from the 1st District of Antipolo to 2nd the nomination.
The Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno is recognized.
Honorable Presiding Officer, my dearest colleagues, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the National Unity Party, with profound gratitude for his dedicated service during the 19th Congress, and with hopes for an even greater nation under his continued leadership of the 20th Congress, I have the honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Representative from the 1st District of Leyte, Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Yefy Givni Vicente B. Imano from the 2nd District of Misamis Oriental to 2nd the nomination.
The Honorable Evgeni Vicente Imano is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Colleagues, friends, members of the House, in behalf of Nationalista Party, the oldest party in the Republic, it is with great honor and pride that I second the motion as our Speaker, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza from the TUCP Partilis to 2nd the nomination.
The Honorable Raymond Democratico C. Mendoza is recognized.
Tagan Salamat, Mr. Presiding Officer. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of PCFI, the Partilis Coalition Foundation Inc., led by our President, Representative Zaldeco, with confidence and with admiration, I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Tagan Salamat.
Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, there being no other nominations for the position of Speaker, I move to close the table of nominations.
Mr. Presi... the Honorable... There is a motion to close the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is carried. Acting Plural Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to proceed with the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Deputy Secretary of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members. May we request members, upon being called, to state the name of the candidate? They are voting for a Speaker of the House of Representatives without any need for explanation.
Roll call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Honorable Representatives, Abalos. Abante.
I fully support Speaker Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress. May I explain, Presiding Officer, my vote? Lana, sasana iexplain?
Mr. Presiding Officer, with the kind indulgence of the Honorable Abante, let's proceed with the voting without explanation.
Asidre.
Thank you, Kong Abante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Tingog Partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Akop. Acosta.
For the 3rd District of Palawan, we vote for Speaker Martin Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Adyok.
The 1st District of the Province of Lando del Sur votes Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the speakership.
Advinkula.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 3rd Legislative District of Cavite, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Agarao.
Ang bota ko po ay para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Agyao.
From the Lone District of Kalinga, ang bota ko po si Speaker Romualdes.
Alano.
From the Lone District of Basilan, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Alba.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the 1st District of Bukinnon, I cast my vote in favor of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Albano.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this humble representation of the 1st District of the Province of Isabela votes for a man for all season, a good leader, and a good friend to all and a visionary, and one of the best public servants that I've ever seen and honored to meet. I vote for the Representative of the 1st District of the Province of Leyte, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Almario Chino Miguel.
From the 2nd District of the Province of Davaiantal, this representation humbly votes for the... for our... for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Almario Dennis.
From Paquati City, 2nd District, I voted for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our House Speaker. Thank you very much.
Almonte.
For the 1st District of Misamis Occidental, Speaker Martin Romualdes for the speakership.
Alvarez Jose.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the 2nd District of Palawan, we vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker. Thank you.
Alvarez Mercedes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Representative Romualdes. Amante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the 3rd District of Laguna, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes. He is the best man for the job. Congratulations, boss.
Amatong.
Ang...
Mr. Presiding Officer, Uswag Ilongo Partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Angara.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This is a presentation from the Lone District of Aurora, votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Angelis.
From the 2nd District of Terlak, we fully support and vote for Martin Romualdes.
Aquino.
For the Lone District of Putuan City, we vote for... I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Aquino Magcaysai.
For United Senior Citizens Partilis, I support Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Arbizon Munir.
2nd District of Sulu, vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Arbizon Munir Jr.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my vote is for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Arenas. From the 3rd District of the Province of Pangasinan, I vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Arrogancia.
From the 3rd District of Quezon Province, I vote yes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Asistyo.
As Representative of 3rd District Kalokan City, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Atide.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Quezon City, my vote is for Ferdinand... Honorable Ferdinand G. Romualdes.
Caumentado. I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you. Ayon.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of Sura Partilis or Solo Parent, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
Bagao.
May I butag, Mr. Presiding Officer. From the Lone District of Dinagat Islands, I vote to abstain.
Balindong.
Salaam alaikum warakmatulayi obbrakato. From the 2nd District of Lando del Sur, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Banyas Nogrades.
From Lone District of General Santo City, I am casting my vote in favor of our lone nominee for speakership, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Bangkoro.
May I butag. For the 1st District of Sambuanga Cibugay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Barba.
Representative Martin Romualdes.
Barbers.
In behalf of the people of Surigao del Norte, District 2, I vote... my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Baronda.
I, Julian L. Jamjam Baronda, of the Lone District of Iloilo City, vote for Ferdinand Marco... Martin G. Romualdes. Madamongas salamat.
Borzaga.
From the 4th District of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Baskuk.
Thank you and good morning. This is a presentation from the 1st District of Agusan del Sur. I vote Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Bautista Claudi. Bautista Johan Munich. On behalf of Trabaho Partilis, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Bautista Lim. Presiding Officer, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as Speaker. Benitez Alfredo. Abstain. Beltran.
May I paabak po from the Bakbo Bukin Partilis, I vote for Ferdinand Romualdes for speakership. Thank you.
Benitez Javier Miguel.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the third district of Niños Occidental, this representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Bernos Ching.
Imbang Abigatayo Aminapo. On behalf of Solid North Party List, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Bernos Joseph Santuninho.
From the Lone District of Abra, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Biron.
Maayong Aga. The fourth district of the province of Iloilo, votes for the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Bucobo.
From the second district of Tagig, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Bolilia.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the fourth district province of Batangas, votes for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Bondok. Briones.
Mister Presiding Officer, abstain.
Bulut Biktang.
For the Lone District of Apayao, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Kagas.
Maayong Buntag Kanatong Tanan. In behalf of the province of Davao del Sur, I cast my vote in favor of honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Calderon.
From the seventh district province of Cebu, I cast my vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Calixto.
From Lone District of Pasay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Kawagdan. Romualdes. Kari.
For the fifth district of Leyte, I vote for honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Castro.
In behalf of the second district of Capis, I vote for the honorable Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 20th Congress.
Kaiton.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Lone District and for the people of Nueva Biscaya, I cast my vote for Representative Martin Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Maraminsalamatko.
Celeste.
From the first district of Pangasinan, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Sendanya.
Mapagpalayang umaga mula sa Akbayan Party List at ang atibung boto ay abstain.
Seniza.
From second district of Davao de Oro, I vote Speaker Martin as Speaker for 20th Congress.
Chan.
From the, from the Lone District of Lapulapu City, I cast my vote on Speaker Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Chua.
On behalf of the third district of the city of Manila, this humble representation fully supports Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Chuatay.
Mister Presiding Officer, my vote is for honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Chungalao.
From the Lone District of Ifigao, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko Elizaldi. Ko Rene Luis.
For Kabataan Party List, I vote abstain.
Koanco Jaime Eduardo Marc.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the first district, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Koanco Marc.
Martin Romualdes, speak, for Speaker.
Coliantes.
The people of the third district of Batangas through this representation, vote Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Copilar.
Good morning Mister Presiding Officer. From the sixth district of Quezon City, I strongly support and cast my vote to Representative Speaker Martin Romualdes to be the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress.
Corvera.
From the Lone District of Agusan del Norte, I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Cruz Agatha Paula.
For the fifth district of Bulakan, Mister Presiding Officer, I cast my vote in favor of Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Cruz Ricardo.
Ang kinatawan po ng unang distrito ng Tagig at Bayan ng Pateros ay para ay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Cruzado.
Mister Chair, from the first district of Cotabato Province, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Kua.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dagooc.
Morning everyone. The Association of Philippine Electric Operatives, a big party list, chose to abstain from voting.
Dalok.
Mister Presiding Officer, our vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dayanghirang.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Daza.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the first district of Northern Samar, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
De Jesus.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Pireka Partelis, ang boto po namin ay, ang boto po ay abstain.
De Lima.
Good morning. This representation as representative of the Mamamayang Liberal or ML Party List, respectfully obtains from the voting.
De Venesia.
The fourth district of Pangasinan, two districts' presentation, Congresswoman Gina de Venesia, cast its vote for latest first district representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress.
Defensor. Romualdes. De Camo.
Maayong Buntag Sa Tanan. Para sa mas progresibo o mas malinahon na tercero distrito, I am casting my vote to the good speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Del Mar.
Reflecting on the will of my constituents, the first district of the city of Cebu will abstain.
Di Makuha.
On behalf of the fifth district of Batangas, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Magila.
Mister Presiding Officer, representing the Lone District of the City of Binian, I am casting my vote in favor of Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Di Maporoy Melda.
From the province of Lanal del Norte, first district, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as House Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Mapora City Amina.
For the second district of Lanal del Norte, I vote for Martin Romualdes as a speaker.
Diokno.
For the Akbayan Party List, I abstain.
Dionisio.
In behalf of the first district of the city of Manila, it's an honor and a privilege to vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as House Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Domingo.
On behalf of the first district of Bulakan, I vote for the honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Domogan.
Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Duterte Harold James. Duterte Omar Vincent. Duterte Paolo. Di Faustino.
Sa ngalan ng ikaanim na distrito ng Lalawigan ng Isabela, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Faustino Michael Carlos.
Para sa ikalimang distrito po ng Lalawigan ng Isabela, sinusuportahan at binuboto po namin si Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Di Ian Paul.
From the third district of Isabela, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Imano.
Padayon Pilipino and the second district of Misamis Oriental votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Enverga.
The first district of Quezon Province reiterates its support and vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Erise.
From the second district of Kalaokan and the Liberal Party, I chose to abstain. Thank you.
Escudero.
From the first district of Sorsugon, I'm voting for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Espares.
From Coopna Coop Party List, this representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Espina.
From the Lone District of Biliran, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ferrer Antonio.
For the sixth district of Cavite, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Ferrer Jeffrey.
From the fourth district of Negroes Occidental, my vote goes to my good friend Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Flores.
Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Fortes.
Good morning. The second district of the province of Sorsugon votes in favor of the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for the speakership of the 20th Congress. Thank you very much.
Frasco.
Maayong Buntag Mister Presiding Officer. From the fifth district of Cebu, I respectfully abstain.
Fresnedi.
From the Lone District of the city of Montilupa, my vote goes to Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Fentebelia.
From the fourth district of Cabarinisur, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Galang.
From the second district of Venezuela, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Galeios.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Garbin.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Akubiko Party List, we vote for honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Garcia Albert.
Mister Presiding Officer, the second district of Bataan votes for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Garcia Dante.
From the second district of La Union, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romualdes.
From the Second District of La Union, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Jose Arturo.
For the Third District of Rizal, we vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Karen Hope.
I vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Maria Angela.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the representative of the Third District of Bataan, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Gardiola.
My vote is for Ferdinand Romualdes.
Garin. Gachalian.
For the First District of Valencia City, we vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Gato.
From the Long District of Batanes, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as a Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Glepa.
One Coop Partilis votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House in the 20th Congress.
Yes, sir. Go.
Second District of Isabela votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Gomez.
Mayong bundag. Ang katauhan sa ikaw pat na distrito sa Leyte, ibutar o bisuporta ka Martin Romualdes isip Speaker of the House.
Gonzalez Alexandria.
For the Long District of the City of Mandaluyo, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Gonzalez Alisa Micaela.
On behalf of the Third District of Pampanga, I vote for Honorable Representative Speaker Martin Romualdes as our Speaker for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Gonzalez Christopher Sheen.
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer. For the Long District of Eastern Samar, I abstain.
Gonzalez Roy.
For the Long District of the City of Satarosa, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Goriseta.
Good morning. From the Second District, Province of Iloilo, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Guiko.
As a representative of the Fifth District of Pangasinan, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ginto.
Representing the First District of Capis, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Gulyas.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Gutierrez.
Romualdes.
Hernandez Charizan.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This representation votes in favor of Representative Romualdes to be the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Hernandez Dennis.
From Port District of Rizal, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Hernandez Ferdinand.
Second District, South Cotabato, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Hernandez Ramil.
From the Second District of Laguna, I vote Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Hofer Asim.
From the Second District of Zamwanga Cibugay, I cast my vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Oribata.
From the First District of Camariasur, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House. Salamat po.
Ismula.
Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Wal Barakatuhu. Akbayan Partilis representative votes to abstain. Thank you.
Iway.
From the First District of Negroes Oriental, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Javier.
Maupay nga aga ha'tong nga tanan, the Second District of Leyte votes Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House for the 20th Congress.
Ko Antonio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the First District of Masbate, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress.
Ko Elisa.
From the Second District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko Wilton.
On behalf of the Third District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Kong Hun.
Mula sa Lalawigan ng Sambales, yes, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation, in behalf of Abangrecod Partilis, I vote as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress, the gentleman from Leyte, Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Labad Labad.
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the Second District of Zamwanga del Norte, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Lacson.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Manila Teachers Partilis, I vote yes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Lagbas.
From the First District of Misamis Oriental, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Lagdomeyo Jose Manuel.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the Second District of Davao del Norte, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Lagdomeyo Monique Yasmin Maria.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the First District of the City of Makati, we vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Lagman.
On behalf of the First Congressional District of Albay, I choose to abstain.
Lagon Daphne.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Lagon Sunny.
On behalf of Acubisaya Partilis, I vote for the Honorable Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Lara.
Ballo, Presiding Officer. As a representative of the Third District of Cagayan, I vote for Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Obalo.
Lazatin.
Maya Paga Panapun, from First District of Pampanga, and we're voting for Martin Romualdes for the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ledesma.
Presiding Officer, your honors, Negroes Occidental's First District, I would like to validate and certify that the holographic manifestation that I issued on May 20, 2025 in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes is my vote. Thank you.
Legacion.
Good morning. As representative of the Third Legislative District of Cabarinisur, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in this 20th Congress.
Legarda.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Long District of Antike, we vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Leviste.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the First District of Batangas, this representation votes for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Libanan.
Sir Presiding Officer, bilang kinatawan po ng four piece Partilis, ang boto ko ay abstain.
Lopez.
Magandang tanghalip po sa ating lahat. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Alona Partilis, I cast my vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you po.
Gloria.
On behalf of the Second District of Albay, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for Speaker in the 20th Congress.
Loyola.
From the Fifth District of Cavite, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Luistro.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the people of Batangas Second District cast their vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress of the Philippines.
Lumayak.
From First District of South Cotabato, I vote for Ferdinand Martes Romaldes.
Makapagalaroyo.
Romualdes.
Makasait.
Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Maceda.
This humble representation from the Fourth District of Manila votes for Honorable Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Madrona.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Romlong votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker.
Malapitan.
The First District of Calocans for Speaker Romaldes.
Mangudadato.
From the representation of the Long District of Magindanao, I'm going to cast my vote for Martin Romaldes.
Manikis.
From the Second District of Sambales, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Maranyon.
Second District Negroes Occidental votes for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Marcoleta.
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer and dear colleagues. Sagip Partilis opts to abstain from voting. Thank you.
Marcos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Ilocos Norte, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as the next Speaker.
Marquez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the First District of the Province of Aclan, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Mastura.
Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Wal Barakatuhu. My vote is for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Matibag.
As a representative of the Sampagita capital of the Philippines, First District of Laguna, it is my firm vote for the continued leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Matugas.
As representative of the First District of Surigao del Norte, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as a Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Mendoza.
Gigan sa mamamuo, and para sa mangagawang Pilipino, TUCP Partilis para kay Martin Romaldes. And Mr. Speaker, let us finish what we started. For the benefit of the workers of this country, wage hike. Thank you.
Mercado.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, guests, ladies and gentlemen. my dear colleagues, guests, ladies and gentlemen, peace to all. Ajung bundag kanatung tanan. All the mayors and our provincial officials of the province of Southern Leyte are very happy that our Speaker comes from Region 8, where Southern Leyte belongs. As the representative of the people of the First District of Southern Leyte, it is my privilege to vote for the gentleman of the First District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as our Speaker of the 28th Congress, House of Representatives, the Republic of the Philippines. Thank you very much.
Mercado Revilia.
In behalf of the Second District of Cavite, I vote in favor of Representative Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 28th Congress. Magandang hapon po.
Mira Flores.
From the Second District of Aklan, I vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Momo.
Bayo Bundag. In behalf of the Province of Surigao del Sur, First District, I will cast my vote in favor to Honorable Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 28th Congress.
Montez.
On behalf of the Kababaihan Kabalikatan para sa kapkanan at kaunlarad ng bayan or 4K Partilist, I am abstain.
Nava.
The Lone District of the Province of Gimaras votes for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Nazal.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of Bagong Generation Partilist, I respectfully abstain.
Nisa.
Por Pusong Pinoy Partilist, I abstain.
Nolasco.
From the First District of the Province of Cagayan, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House.
Oominal Henry.
Mister Presiding Officer, Asensopinoy Partilist gives its vote and places its confidence on Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Thank you.
Oominal Sancho Fernando.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the Second District of Misamis Occidental, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Thank you.
Odukado.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Wantahanan Partilist supports and casts his vote in favor of Speaker Romaldes.
Olivares.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the First District of the City of Paranyake votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as the Speaker of the House of the Representatives of the 28th Congress.
Ong Chuan.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the Second District of Northern Samar, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as Speaker of the House for the 28th Congress. Thank you.
Ordanes.
As representative of Senior Citizens Partilist, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Oreta.
From the Lone District Satif Malabon, this representation humbly votes for Martin Romaldes for Speaker of the 28th Congress.
Ortega. I vote Romaldes. Oano Dizon.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Padernos. Panaligan.
I vote for Martin G. Romaldes.
Pancho.
Bilang kinatawan ay kalawandis dito ng Bulakan, buo ang suporta po natin para po kay Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Panotes.
From the Second District of Camarines Norte, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Pasqual.
Sa ngalan ng tao sa ikaapat na distrito ng dalawigan ng Nueva Ecija, ibinuboto ko si Speaker Martin Romaldes. Salamat po.
Perez.
Buenas dias. Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Second District of Sanbuanga City, I cast my vote for Martin Romaldes, Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Pimentel.
Mister Presiding Officer, as representative of the Second District of Surigao del Sur, I cast my vote for Speaker Honorable Martin Romaldes.
Plaza.
From the Second District of the Province of Agusan del Sur, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Plato.
Ang magandang umaga po. Ang hapon na pala. Sa ngalan po ng ikaanim na distrito ng Bulalawigan ng Bulakan, kami po ay buong pusong sumusuporta kay Speaker Martin G. Romaldes. Maraming salamat po.
Po.
Magandang umaga po. Para sa sapat na pagkain, trabaho, at hustisia para sa lahat, ang boto ko ay para kay Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Maraming salamat.
Primisias Agabas.
Naimbag na bigat tayo amin. Masanto siya kabasal edsi kayo namin. Mister Speaker, on behalf of the people of the Sixth District of Pangasinan, I vote for Honorable Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the 28th Congress.
Kumaren.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Third District of Quezon City, I will vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Puno.
For the First District of Antipolo City, we vote Romaldes.
Kimbo. Rama.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Repto.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the Sixth District of Batangas respectfully votes for Honorable Speaker Martin G. Romaldes.
Rehencia.
From the Lone District of Iligan City, I cast my vote to Honorable Congressman Ferdinand Romaldes as Speaker of the 28th Congress. Thank you.
Remulia.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Seventh District of Cavite, my vote is for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Revilia Bryan.
On behalf of Partilist Tagimad, this representation votes for Martin Romaldes.
Revilia Ramon Jolo.
For the First District of the Province of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Ridon.
For vehicles arro, we abstain.
Rivera.
From Telesgabtarlak, I vote Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Robes.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Lone District of Sanos Edelmonte Bulakan, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 28th Congress.
Rodriguez Yulohio.
From the Lone District of Catanduanis, I vote Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 28th Congress.
Rodriguez Maximo.
On behalf of the Abante Mindanao Partilist, from the beautiful people of Mindanao, progressive and very eager to have this representation, I vote strongly and gladly for Speaker Honorable Representative Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Rodriguez Rufus.
Mister Presiding Officer, my distinguished colleagues, guests, as President of the Century's Democratic Party of the Philippines, CDP, and on behalf of the good people of the Second District of Cagayan di Oro, the city of golden friendship, the city of the best white water rafting in the Philippines, I vote for Speaker of the 28th Congress of the House of the People, the Honorable Representative from the First District of Leyte, for Speaker the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romaldes. Dagang salamat.
Roman.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. For the First District of Bataan, I vote for Representative Martin Romaldes.
Romaldes Andrew Julian.
On behalf of Tingung Partilist, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Romaldes Ferdinand Martin. Romaldes Ye damari.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Romaldo.
From the Lone District of Kamigin, my vote is Speaker Martin G. Romaldes.
Romulo.
I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Roque.
Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Sagarbaria.
From the Second District of the Province of Negros Oriental, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the Second District of the 28th Congress.
Sacaluran.
From the District 1 of Province of Sultan Kudarot, I cast my vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as House Speaker.
Salceda.
Mister Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, this honorable representation would first like to greet you, Josmarhain Aldau, as the sole Lacas representative and the Third District of Albay. Like my uncle, former Representative Joey Sartes Salceda, who supported him as the Majority Leader in the 18th Congress and as the Speaker during the 19th Congress, my vote is for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House in the 28th Congress. Thank you.
Sally.
Bisbilarrahmani rahim. Asalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Presiding Officer, for the Lone District of the Province of Tawi Tawi, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes to be the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 28th Congress. Thank you.
Salvacion.
Mister Presiding Officer, sa ngalan po ng mamamayan ng marinduke, ako po ay pinagbigyan nilang maupo dito bilang kanilang representante, kahit ice cane din lang ang aking dinadala. Kahit ice cane din lang ang aking dada-dala noong araw ng eleksyon, ang aking boto po ay binibigay sa ating minamahal na Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Marami po salamat.
Salvador.
Nagmula sa Bagong Distrito Dos ng Nueva Ecija, I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Salvami.
Mayadnadlaw kanindong tanan. From First District of Palawan, I vote Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes. Matamang salamat po kanindong tanan.
San Fernando.
Ginong Presiding Officer, sa ngalan ho ng kampehan ng mga maralita at mangagawa, kamangagawa Partilist, kami ho ay bumuboto ng abstain.
Santos Maria Alana Samantha.
Good afternoon. The Third District of Cotabato Province.
Good afternoon. The 3rd District of Catabato Province would like to vote Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Santos Marc Anthony.
Mister Presiding Speaker, from the 1st District of Las Pinas, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Shimura.
From the 4th District of Cebu, I respectfully vote Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Singson Rachel.
As a representative of the Ilocano people, I cast my vote once again for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you.
Singson Ronald.
I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Singson Mihan.
From the 2nd District of Ilocusur, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Solon.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Suwan.
For the 1st District of Cagayan Dioro City and Padayan Filipino, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Swansing Bella Vanessa.
The representation of the 2nd District of Sultan Kudarat casts his vote to Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Swansing Michaela Angela.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 1st District of Nueva Ecija, it is this humble representation's honor to once again cast my vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Suarez. Romualdes. Suntay. Abstain. Taliado.
From the 1st District of Camarinas Norte, I cast my vote for Representative Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Tan Ayman.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. On behalf of Kusugtausup Partilist, I would like to cast my vote to Martin Romualdes.
Tan Joseph.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 4th District of Isabela, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Tan Keith Micah.
I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Tan Reynolds Michael.
Samar 2nd District will abstain.
Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James.
On behalf of the 1st District of Samar, I abstain, Mister Presiding Officer.
Tan Chai.
On behalf of Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Kamalayan Partilist, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress in recognition of his proven leadership and commitment to progress. Thank you.
Tan Watko.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of 2nd District of the Province of Lysal, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Tariela.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Occidental Mindoro, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Teodoro. Tering.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of KM Ngayonap Partilist, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Davis.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of TGP Partilist, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tianko.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Navota City, I abstain, but I will not join the minority. I will be an independent.
Ting.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 50th District of Manila votes for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Tiño. I abstain. Tolentino.
On behalf of the people of the 8th District of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tuwan.
From the newly created District of the Province of South Catabato, the 3rd District, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tulfo Jocelyn. Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
Mister Presiding Officer, the people of the 2nd District votes and support Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tupas. Jutor.
Mayong buntag, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ti.
Mister Presiding Officer, I respectfully abstain.
Ummali.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ungap.
Mister Presiding Officer, I am voting in abstention in the election for Speaker for this House of Representatives. I have opted not to align with the majority or the minority, and I intend to serve this chamber as an independent member. Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Uy De Carlo.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 1st District of Davao del Norte votes for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Uy Roberto.
As representative of the 1st District of Zambuanga del Norte, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Valeriano.
I vote for Speaker Romualdes as for Speaker of the House.
Vargas.
The 5th Legislative District of Quezon City votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Vargas Alfonso.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Veloso.
Maupay nga utuhatun nga tanan, on behalf of the 3rd District of Leyte, it is our privilege and honor to vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes for the 20th Congress.
Veloso Gurli.
Speaker Romualdes.
Vergara.
Mahal na tagapangulo. Bilang kinatawa ng ikatlong distrito ng Lalawiga ng Nueva Ecija, lupain ng eka nga kung magsalta. Sa ngalan ang aking mga mamaya, buong pagpapakumbaba at may mahalasakit sa pagkakaisa ng ating kapulungan. Ibinibigay ko ang aking boto sa kagalang-galang na Martin Romualdes bilang Speaker ng mababang kapulungan, na way patuloy tayong magkaisa para sa kapakanan ng sambayan ng Pilipino. Marami salamat po.
Villia.
From the 1st District of Cekihor, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis.
Ang boto ko po ay kay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Villia Fuerte Vincenzo Renato Luigi.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Camarinas Sur, we firmly stand with Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Villianueva. Villierica.
On behalf of the 4th District of Bulakan, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Violago.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Bulakan, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Yamsuwan.
The 2nd District of Paranyake, through this humble representation, casts its vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Yap Christopher Son.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Yap Edvick.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of AXS Partilist, this representation votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of 20th Congress. Thank you.
Yap Eric.
Naingbagnaldo tayo amin. In behalf of my kakailan in Benguet, our vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Yap John Gisnell.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the 1st District of the Province of Bohol, my vote goes to Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Yatko.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Inares.
1st District of Rizal, Martin Romualdes.
You Jaisal Victoria.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Zambuanga del Sur, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
You Joseph Kim.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Zambanga del Sur, I vote for Congressman Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker in the 20th Congress.
Yulo.
This representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Zamora Maria Carmen.
From the 1st District of Davao de Oro, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Zamora Isabel Maria.
I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Zubiri.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Bukidnon, I respectfully choose to abstain.
Second call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Honorable Representatives. Acop. Bautista Claudio. Co Elizaldi. Duterte Harold James. Duterte Omar Vincent. Duterte Paulo. Garin.
Romualdes.
Patiernos.
On the part of Galingsapuso GP Partilist, abstain.
Tan Samir. Teodoro.
From the 1st District of the City of Marquina, this representation votes for Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Tupas. Villianueva. Villianueva. Tool for Joseline.
With 34 members abstaining from the vote, the result of the voting shows that the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes garnered 269 votes. With 269 votes, the Chair declares the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes from the 1st District of Leyte as the duly-elected Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress. Acting Plurleader.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move to constitute a committee of 6 members composed of the following: the Honorable David JJC Suarez, the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos, the Honorable Wilfredo Mark M. Inverga, the Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno, the Honorable Jeff Gevni Vicente B. Imano, and the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza to notify the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes of his election as Speaker of the House of Representatives and thereafter to escort the Speaker-elect to the rostrum for the oath-taking rites.
There being no objection to the motion, the motion is approved. The notification committee is hereby constituted and the members of the House so named are appointed to the notification committee and are requested to inform Speaker-elect Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes of his election and to escort him to the rostrum. The Chair invites the family of the Speaker-elect to join him at the rostrum as he takes his oath of office. Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, the duly-elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes from the 1st District of Leyte.
The Honorable Salvador A. Plato of the 6th District of Bulacan will administer the oath of office to the Speaker-elect. The Honorable Salvador A. Plato is invited to the rostrum to administer the oath of office of the Speaker. May we request all the members of the House to rise. Oto of office, please raise your right hand and follow after me. I, Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes of the 1st District of Leyte.
I, Ferdinand Martin Gomez Ramaldes of the 1st District of the Province of Leyte.
Having been elected as a Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Having been elected as a Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
That I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
The duties of my present position and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
The duties of my present position and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws.
And that I will obey the laws.
Legal orders.
Legal orders.
And decrees promulgated by the duly-constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And decrees promulgated by the duly-constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, with humility in my heart and a deep sense of duty, I rise today to accept the renewed trust you have given me to serve once again as your Speaker of the House of Representatives. This indeed is an honor that I embrace with full awareness of the responsibility it entails not only to this esteemed institution, but most importantly, to the Filipino people we have all sworn to serve. Ang tiwala ay hindi gantimpala, kundi panibagong hamon. At bawat hamon ay pagkakataon para mas maglingkod ng mas tapat, mas totoo, mas buo. As we open the 20th Congress, we build upon the foundations laid upon in the 19th, advancing reforms that bring the government closer to the people and restoring trust in this chamber as a true House of the people. We convene at a time that demands unity of purpose, clarity of vision, and courage of conviction. We are not here to preserve power, but to pursue progress. Not to serve ourselves, but to uplift the lives of our fellow citizens. Today, as we formally begin this new chapter, we do so amid a development that once again calls us to reflect on our sacred constitutional duty. The Supreme Court's decision on the impeachment case filed against the Vice President. And let me say this with the utmost respect. The Supreme Court has spoken and we recognize its decision. But let it never be said that the House of the People bowed in silence. At the time, we draw a line. The power to initiate impeachment is the exclusive domain of this chamber. It flows from the people's will and rests solely on the clear language of the Constitution. It is neither granted nor guided by any outside institution. The court may close a case, but it cannot close a cause. The pursuit of accountability is not a moment. It is our mandate. We are not moved by personalities, but by principles. We are not driven by vendetta, but instead by vigilance. Our goal has never been to destroy, only to demand the truth. When institutions falter, the House of the People always stands firm. When others fear the storm, your house holds the line. And as your Speaker, I will be here, not just to preside, but to protect. Hindi ko kayo iiwan sa gitna ng unos. Gaya... Gaya ng ama ng tahanan na hindi natuturo kapag may bagyong papasok. Babantayin natin ang ating kapulungan. Sisiguraduin kung walang bubong ang babagsak, walang pader magigiba, at walang miyembro ang mapapabayaan. Kahit anong bagyo at baha, hindi tayo susuko. Titindig tayo at hindi panghinan ng loob. Kasama ninyo ako sa pag sulubong ng bagong araw. Our work as legislators is both constitutional and moral. It is through the laws we pass and the accountability we uphold that we protect rights, promote equity, and shape the future of our democracy. Bawat batas na ating ipinapasa ay salamin ng pangarap ng bawat Pilipino. Mula sa estudyante ang nangangarap, sa manggagawang lumalaban, hanggang sa pamilya patuloy na umaasa. To my fellow representatives, thank you for your continued support and your commitment and unwavering public service. To those... To those who have offered different views, I thank you as well. Your voices enrich our debates and even fortify our democracy. Hindi kahinan ang pakakaiba ng opinyon. Sa Kongresong may respeto, ito ay pinagmumulan ng talino, tapang, at tunay na pagbabago. And as your Speaker, I reaffirm our common commitment to be a House that is transparent in conduct, firm in principle. firm in principle, and responsive to the needs of our people. We shall lead with competence, legislate with compassion, and govern with integrity. I thank His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. for his continued trust in the leadership of this chamber. The House of Representatives stands ready to be your reliable partner in building Ababum Pilipinas. A nation that is inclusive, resilient, and grounded in justice and opportunity. And to our beloved Filipino people, you are not just our mandate, you are our mission. This house is your voice, and we are ready. Ready to speak up, stand up, and act in your name and for your future. Let this big Congress remember not only for the laws we passed, but for the lives we changed. Not only for the battles we fought, but for the truth we stood for. The judgment that matters most is not that of any single court, but of history and, of course, the people we serve. Mabuhay ang kapulungan ng mga kinatawan. Mabuhay ang sabay ng Pilipino. Madamo mga salamat, hayong matanan! Please take your seats, ladies and gentlemen. The acting floor leader is recognized.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the 19th Congress Rules of the House of Representatives as the provisional rules to govern its proceedings until the adoption of the rules of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress.
There is a motion to adopt the rules of the House of the 19th Congress as the provisional rules until the adoption of the rules of the House for the 20th Congress. There being no objection, the motion is approved. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the 19th Congress Rules of Procedure Governing Inquiries in Aid of Legislation as the provisional rules until the adoption of the rules of procedure governing inquiries in aid of legislation for the 20th Congress.
There is a motion to adopt the 19th Congress Rules of Procedure Governing Inquiries in Aid of Legislation as the provisional rules until the adoption of the rules of procedure governing inquiries in aid of legislation for the 20th Congress. There being no objection, the motion is approved. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the 19th Congress Rules of Procedure in Impeachment Proceedings as the provisional rules for the 20th Congress until the adoption of the rules of procedure in impeachment proceedings for the 20th Congress.
There is a motion to adopt the 19th Congress Rules of Procedure in Impeachment Proceedings as the provisional rules until the adoption of the rules of procedure in impeachment proceedings for the 20th Congress. There being no objection, the motion is approved. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to proceed with the oath of the members of the House of Representatives.
All members of the House, please rise. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lord Esteban Sor...
Of... Having been elected as Representative of...
Having been elected as Representative for this district.
Hereby solemnly swear...
Hereby solemnly swear...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
Well and faithfully discharge...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
...the duties of my present position...
The duties of my present position...
...and all others that I may hereafter hold...
All others that I may hereafter hold...
...under the Republic of the Philippines.
Under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will obey the laws...
That I will obey the laws...
...legal orders...
Legal orders...
...and decrees... promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
Promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
That I impose this obligation...
That I impose this obligation...
...upon myself voluntarily...
Upon myself voluntarily...
...without mental reservation...
Without mental reservation...
...or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Congratulations to you all. You may take your seats. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to proceed with the election of Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The election of the Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives is now in order. Acting floor leader, please proceed.
Mister Speaker, I move to elect the Honorable J.J.C. David J.J.C. Suarez as Senior Deputy Speaker and the following members as Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives as follows. Honorable Janet Elgarin, Honorable Yasser Alonto Balindong, Honorable Francisco Paulo P. Ortega V., Honorable Jefferson F. Congun, Honorable Christine Singson-Mihan, Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno, Honorable Faustino G. D. III, Honorable Virginal G. Biron, and the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Honorable David J.J.C. Suarez is elected as Senior Deputy Speaker, and the following members are elected as Deputy Speakers of the following Representatives: Honorable Janet Elgarin, Honorable Yasser Alonto Balindong, Honorable Francisco Paulo Ortega, Honorable Jefferson F. Congun, Honorable Christine Singson-Mihan, Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno, Honorable Faustino G. D. III, Honorable Virginal G. Biron, and Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to proceed with the election of the Secretary General.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The election of the Secretary General is now in order. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to elect Mister Reginald S. Velasco as Secretary General of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Mister Reginald S. Velasco is unanimously elected Secretary General of the House of Representatives. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to proceed with the election of the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The election of the Sergeant-at-Arms is now in order. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to proceed. I move to elect General Napoleon C. Itaas as Sergeant-at-Arms of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. General Napoleon C. Itaas retired is unanimously elected Sergeant-at-Arms of the House of Representatives. Acting floor leader.
Mister Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to elect the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos of the First District of Ilocos Norte as Majority Leader of the House of Representatives.
Is there... There is a motion to elect the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos as the Majority Leader of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos is elected as Majority Leader of the House of Representatives. Session suspended. Session resumed. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mister Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution Number 67, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 67 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 67. Resolution informing the Senate that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 67.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 67. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 67 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution Number 68, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 68 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 68. Resolution informing His Excellency Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines, that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 68.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 68. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. The ayes have it. The Resolution Number 68 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to consider House Concurrent Resolution Number 1, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the concurrent resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Concurrent Resolution providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold a joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. The ayes have it. House Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is hereby adopted. The session is suspended while the House transmits messages to the Senate. Session is resumed. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mister Speaker, I move to consider messages from the Senate, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the messages.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, consideration of messages from the Senate is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read messages from the Senate.
Message dated July 28, 2025, informing the House that the Senate on even date adopted Senate Resolution Number 2 entitled: Resolution informing the House of Representatives that the Senate has been organized with the election of its officers and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the first regular session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines.
To the archives.
Message... Message dated July 28, 2025, informing the House that the Senate on even date adopted Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1 entitled: Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress, now convened for its first regular session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines, is ready to hear the State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
To the calendar of business for the day. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the concurrent resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the concurrent resolution.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress, now convened for its first regular session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines, is ready to hear the State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt Concurrent Resolution Number... Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Those in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The ayes have it. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, in view of the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1, authorizing the creation of a joint committee of both Houses to notify the President of the Philippines that the Congress has convened and ready to hear his message. On the part of the House, I move that the following members be appointed to the joint committee. Honorable David J.J.C. Suarez, Honorable Janet Elgarin, Honorable Yasser Alonto Balindong, Honorable Francisco Paulo P. Ortega V., Honorable Jefferson F. Congun, Honorable Christine Singson-Mihan, Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno, Honorable Faustino G. D. III, Honorable Virginal G. Biron, and Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The members of the House of Representatives, so named, are hereby appointed to the joint committee and are requested to immediately discharge their duty. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, in order to give the members of the joint committee time to perform their assigned task, and until the House counterpart is ready to report back their accomplishment to this House, I move for the suspension of the session.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The session is suspended. Session is resumed. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mister Speaker, we have received a report from the joint committee that the President has been informed that Congress will convene in a joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon to hear his State of the Nation address. Mister Speaker, we wish to remind the members of this chamber that all of us must be here an hour before the joint session at 4 o'clock.
The remarks of the Majority Leader are duly noted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to recognize the Secretary General for an announcement.
The Secretary General is recognized.
Mister Speaker, upon the request of the members of the minority and for the information of the body, members who did not vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Giromualdes are hereby requested to attend and participate in the meeting for the purpose of electing the minority leader to be held at the Minority Conference Room immediately after the adjournment of today's session. of today's session.
The announcement of the Secretary General is duly noted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to give way to the joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon, I move to adjourn the session until tomorrow, Tuesday, July 29, 2025, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The session is adjourned until tomorrow, Tuesday, July 29, 2025, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.